Good that you join each and every one of us here in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
You want to have the Girl Scouts?
And I want to ask that the Girl Scout troop, I believe it's number 560, Laura Wallace as the leader to come up and lead us in the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, just to go over, but then I will ask that you are on the agenda as item number eight, so I'll bring you forward in case the girls need to go home and do homework or things of that nature. Dale, could I have the roll call, please?
Council President Haley?
Here.
Council Vice President Collins?
Here.
Councilman De Cruz?
Here.
Councilwoman Gladhill?
Here.
Councilman Veale?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. Item number four, A and B, could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from the work session of April 23rd, 2018, and the regular sessions, April 16th, 17th, 23rd, and April 30th of 2018?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the consent agenda, but before I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, there was one correspondence that may have been left out, and I would just like to make sure that was added to the consent agenda, and I believe that was from Sarah Maki on, nope.
Tara Appison.
Tara Appison.
The email report.
And that should be included because that's on the consent agenda.
And just for clarification, everyone received that on the council? Did you actually receive the email?
Yes.
You did, so it simply was omitted from the report. We'll correct that.
Okay, so with that being corrected and added back to the agenda, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And before we move on to item 6A, I would ask that we entertain item 8B, which is a communication dated May 9th from Laura Wallace, leader of Girl Scout troop 560 in Mattoonik, concerning the efforts to eliminate single-use plastics bags. We have received that, placed it on file, and the town further directs as follows. Before, I guess, we do that, if the Girl Scouts would like to come up and just say a word or two, you're more than welcome to come to the podium and state your name.
Olivia, Olivia. This is troop 560, Laura Wallace, and my troop has something that they'd like to say.
Good evening, and may we for allowing you to speak with us, we are the community of Alabama, and we are the citizens of Alabama, and we are the citizens of Alabama. After the meeting of thousands of people, we are the first example to move into a state acting as an example of a global effort to protect our children, our students, and ourselves. We would definitely be excited if our mother could find a way to help. If we do not see that, we will be held at the end of this year. If I can be building, I can get to be, and we are not going to be able to do this. We don't want to go up in a world attack, so we have to take action by doing that. We are sponsored events and have a faith in this. Those who have few months, hard years, and many other two million years, have obtained similar on conditions to eliminate single-use plastic bags. So I think I would have to do this.
Thank you. Thank you.
As I first was warned, there are lots of signatures to cancel that. Please help us to change the nation's own social, and you will be needed. This is our role in Alabama. There are active events, and our people are in there, and we are handled. The women's travel task are pending on July 5th, and we are still in the process. We have that, we are in, or we are in, is, is, or that. Active events are ongoing, and South East Sample is now to be taken. Often times, we tend to learn how the ocean, it makes sense that ocean health is a consistent priority, and where we are seen and where we are, for environmental sustainability. We need to reduce the amount we should use, rather than recycling, it is not a question. A paper class, and he is the answer, and we are focused on there are those usable packages. You have a question, South East, and 30,000, and we need to, please, uh, I can't hear. Tonight, there are questions, and the town council is asking, what is the limit to eliminating single-use plastic bags in South East? There's not the last providing community of that. We look forward to this, and along with other local community members, the town council is listening, getting with the Thursday, May 30th, we will continue to test, and offer solutions that other communities have to accept. In conclusion, we have to stop, and not be by the lines, we are not handled, and we are, all kinds of things, and it should be, as we do the fourth, and the fourth, and the fourth, either say, or, we have to, and we are all responsible, no one can say, I know, or do. We are changing world standards, and we are changing world standards. We want, I want you to be, you know, thank for the plastic bags. You want to stop us, please, 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 we are aware of you. Plastic, we keep on, we have created, and we really hope this time, and if you don't know why, we will. If you think about plastic, it's not just, we can, that's the next area, often you are talking about, you know, that, 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 but at the present time, that's why we're here before you. The building construction that has necessitated the request is a 700-foot addition to the station, to the existing station, to the left side of, if you're looking at Tower Hill from Tower Hill Road. It's a small addition, it's a very large lot, we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation in just a few moments, it's going to go over all those details, but that particular addition is going to house an office area, a small kitchen, a small bunk room for the firefighters as we begin to move into call situations, and a few bathrooms. So with me this evening are, first of all, our fire chief, Steve Pinch, and Tony Chaconi, that's one of our wardens, right here in the second row, and we also have John Blessing, our district administrator, also in the second row, and to do our presentation this evening, we have Joe Casali and William Laverty from Joe Casali Engineers. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Joe to do the PowerPoint presentation, which will give you all of the information you need about the specific project. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Just for the record, my name is Joe Casali, I'm a registered professional engineer with offices at 300 Post Road in Warwick. If I may, quick PowerPoint presentation to just try to bring the scope into concession a little bit. In terms of where we are in the world, you can see Route 1, Tower Hill Road, and Sagatucket Road, as well as Torrey Road to the north, and those are the two parcels in question, both in Accessus Platte 42-2, Lot 16 and 17, respectfully. If we take a closer look at them, what would be the existing fire station as it exists today is on that smaller lot, it's about 2,400 square feet. You can see wetlands to the north on the larger piece, and our proposal, Madam President, is to extinguish one of those interior property lines to an administrative subdivision and to combine that into one large lot. It's about 130,000 square feet. The proposal would be a 700-square-foot building addition. You can see the elevation of the snapshot, what it would look like. The intent is for it to blend into the existing building while housing it for some of our operational needs. And then, in terms of the site design, we're proposing 12 parking spaces, one of them being handicap accessible. There's a couple of other site improvements, including bringing domestic and fire protection water to the building, as well as a new septic system and septic tank. And so our proposal tonight is we're requesting the zone change from your R80 zone to the government and institutional zone, and as Attorney Horne had said, this would allow the fire station use by right, and it would alleviate all of the dimensional setbacks that would be required. But Madam President, I'd be happy to answer questions of you, members of the committee, the council, excuse me, or of someone in the public as well.
I just had a quick question. We recently authorized an application to go forward for scenic highway for Route 1. I was just wondering if that had any influence over any of your architectural plans, or if that played a role at all?
It didn't. The architectural improvements were done primarily out of operational need, specific to the fire department. And the basis of design, the best that I understand it in terms of the architecture was, you know, we don't want this addition to look like an addition, we want it to blend into the natural character. We believe that that's consistent with those improvements, but none of the goals in any of that were factored heavily into our design.
And how close are you going to be to the wetlands, looking at your PowerPoint presentation? It looks like you're coming right up on them.
Right, so those wetlands are considered freshwater wetlands in the vicinity of the coast, so because they are less than three acres in totality, there's no 50-foot perimeter buffer in addition to it. So in essence, we're allowed to go right up to the wetlands, but what you see before you, none of the proposed pavement has extended any further into the wetlands than already exists today.
Okay.
So our existing parking lot, all of the impervious surfaces that exist today, will be there, proposed tomorrow, but nothing further. What we've met with and offered the Coastal Resource Management Council, we feel that it'll be very well received in our application, is while no attenuation of stormwater is needed because no impervious areas are being created, we're trying to clean that water to the maximum extent practicable before it gets into the wetlands, so at least have some of the pollutants found in the stormwater filtered out through some best management practices before they get into those freshwater wetlands.
Okay.
Are there going to be any improvements to the exiting and entering of the facility?
Yeah, I mean, right now, there's really no curb cuts on that western side, and so what we're, we'll be able to do now is we'll be able to stripe that lot so that we can at least have those 12 spaces striped and designated. You don't see that that exists today. We can also stripe and sign accordingly that handicap spot so it's in accordance with the ADA regs. So what, we haven't changed much in terms of curb cuts because those trucks are going to come right out onto Route 1, and we would have the access in and around the building for the firefighters, or say for the general public, as well.
I know this is probably not part of the plan, but one of the things I would love to see, and I don't know how it would happen, and I'm sure the state would have to get involved, would be ease of getting onto Route 1 south from that station.
Yeah, I mean, currently now, there's no way that we can, there's no movement for us to do that. That would be a separate physical alteration permit that we would need to file with DOT. Frankly, Councilman, I haven't looked into those warrants, I don't know if we meet the warrants to do that, but I know it is difficult, maybe the chief or the administrator could probably speak in terms of operational times and what it takes them to get to the respective areas that this Station 6 services.
The way I look at what Attorney Margaret Hogan presented is that this makes this building more functional for staff members, for need that just serves maybe a two-bay garage there that has two trucks, I think at present I could be wrong, but the expansion and the need, if necessary, to house some staff if there were even more serious emergency situations, and I think that building has been lacking there, but I do think, truthfully, it serves, it's not the center of the town, but you can go down Sagatucket Road, you can get to, you know, the police station. There is a need on Route 1, there certainly are a number of emergencies that we've seen up at the 138 intersection, not necessarily that they're all fire-related, however, if there's not been any upgrades in a while, this is probably a very prudent choice for our town to take.
Thank you, and you're correct, Madam President, this would, this addition would allow us to now have six volunteers actually be able to spend the night with the sleeping quarters and so forth and so on. That's mostly how it's going to fill our need in terms of all that extra space is not for, primarily for equipment, it's more for the labor force.
And based on the fact that they're all volunteers and not getting paid a salary, it's not a bad investment to make, that's just my own personal opinion, I can't speak for the council. But if there's any more discussion from anybody in the audience, we certainly welcome it, and if you have any additional questions of us, please, now is the time to ask.
And so, opening this up to GI zoning will allow many more uses for the rest of the property there. Does the Union Fire District anticipate ever using the rest of that property, or is it going to remain as?
Actually, the recommendation from the planning board limits it to this specific use.
Okay.
So we're all set there.
Do you have any more questions of the council?
We don't.
Is anybody else here that would like to speak to this matter?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item 7A as presented with reference from the planning boards.
If you could just incorporate and adopt as your own the recommendation of the planning board dated April 25th, 2018, specifically in regard to the findings with consistency of the comprehensive plan, as well as consistency with purposes of zoning.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing no abstentions, objection, motion carries. Good luck with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Maggie. Moving on to item 7B, which is another public hearing, to consider proposed amendments to the Police Department's standing orders relative
to the Police Department's standing orders relative to harassment in the workplace, evidence, property collection and preservation, and strip and body cavity searches. And this has been an exhibit that has shown on Exhibit One that we, as a council, have had the opportunity. Do you have any communication on that, Dale? No? Okay. Chief Jabber.
Excuse me. Joe Jabber, Chief of Police. These are the three more policies, standing orders, that we need to have approved to continue with accreditation for the Police Department. They're pretty clear-cut. They fall in line with all of the other police departments in the state. So if anyone has any questions.
Just how much of a departure are they from the current standing orders?
Very little, very little. The harassment policy in the workplace is pretty much the same as what the town, the entire town has.
And you mentioned accreditation. How close do you think you guys are to seeing that come to fruition?
Well, we hope to have it done a year from July.
Okay.
It's a long road.
Yeah, it sure is. With everything else, it's a long road.
I'm sure. Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Chief, to that?
No.
Would anybody else like to come up to the podium to discuss the matter? If not, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing unanimous, do I have a motion to approve Item Seven B?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions, no, okay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Item Eight C, which is a resolution adopted by the Portsmouth Town Council on April twenty-third of this year, requesting that the Attorney General distribute Google Settlement funds to the public schools to provide funding for security upgrades. This memorandum was received, and how does the council further direct?
Make a motion we put Item Eight C on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any names, abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to Eight D, which is also a communication dated April twenty-third from Sharon Gold concerning efforts to reduce carbon emissions in South Kingstown. This has been received, and the Town Council further directs.
Sharon here?
Sharon here? Okay.
Make a motion to place this on file and direct it to the Sustainability Committee? I believe. Do we know if Sharon has already spoken to the Sustainability?
Yes, she's been here several times.
Just a couple of points of information here. Sharon has spoken to the Sustainability Committee on that, about the idling, and we've also got a policy in place here in South Kingstown. We've had a policy with regard to non-emergency vehicles and idling since two thousand and twelve. It's not clear to me that we've enforced that policy as rigorously as might be. We're looking into how we can encourage folks to abide by the policy. So I have spoken to Ms. Gold, and she makes some very good points, and we have some work to do.
Did she present these ordinances to the Sustainability Committee? Do we know?
I don't know if these particular ordinances were presented.
I know she has come before the council before, and has spoken to us here in the council chambers. That I do know. But that might have been a year or two ago now. It was a while ago, but she definitely has been before us. So the recommendation?
Did you, you made a motion?
Made a motion.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. We're moving on to Item F, which is a communication that was dated May tenth from Mary Banfield, managing member of NICE LLC, concerning the regulations of marijuana-related uses, and that has been received and placed on file. Is Mary Banfield here, or somebody to speak for Mary? Okay.
Do you have a copy of this already, Chelsea? I make a motion to place this on file and refer it to the Planning Department for consideration.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing that unanimously passes. Moving on to Item Number Nine, which is comments from interested citizens. Please note, if you are interested in speaking, please come to the podium and state your name. We'd be interested to hearing what you have to say.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the council. My name is Brenda Dillman, and I'm a resident of the town and a teacher at Curtis Corner Middle School, and I just wanted to thank you very much for setting up the workshop on the thirty-first. All of the eighth-grade teachers have been working on this issue of plastic in the oceans and single-use plastic bags, not just as science teachers, but the math and the social studies, and our kids are very excited to present what they've learned to you and make their case, and they're very passionate about it. So I just wanted to extend my appreciation, and we look forward to seeing you on the thirty-first.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. You're a great teacher at Curtis Corner.
Thank you. Oh, one thing. We, my students did do some calculations using census data from two thousand and sixteen and an EPA figure on the number of bags in the United States, then took that information and used the population estimate of about thirty thousand and change for South Kingstown's current population, and they came up with nine and a half million plastic bags per year in South Kingstown. We then ran some statistical analogies with that, found it could wrap around Rhode Island's coastline, four hundred miles of Rhode Island's coastline, seven and a half times, just our little town in one year, or go across the United States and halfway back. So I think it really is vital, and I'm very pleased that you're taking a look at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come up and speak? Now is the time to do so.
Hi, I'm Sharon Ellery, and I'm a resident of Peashtown House, and I have been going to Green Line Pharmacy, and as you know this, they always use paper bags, and they're very nice, so small items, and even if people like CVS, too much plastics. It'd be wonderful to get rid of them. And by the way, I make my own.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm glad to see all these people here. Last time, last week, there were four of us, but the four that stood up and represented the town were pretty good, don't you think?
Yes.
It's not what you know, it's what you can prove, right? And I think those four of us could prove a lot, and I'd like to thank the town manager. He's a stand-up guy. And see you later, Steve Alfred.
Does anybody else want to come up to the podium? I always welcome everybody's opinion, but I, Steve is always entitled to his own, and he did a great job over thirty years. We do have a new town manager, and you're right, absolutely have to agree with you, he's doing a terrific job, and we're very, very thankful. But I think we're, we were all thankful for Steve's tenure, too. Steve did a great job while he was here.
There was no disrespect to Steve Alfred.
No, I don't, I don't think you were disrespectful. I just wanted to make-
He's only been here a couple months, and he's done plenty.
Yeah, he's done a great job. We're very, very happy.
Does anyone want to give a hand to the new town manager?
Thank you. Does anybody else want to come up to the podium and speak, because now is the time to do it under comments from interested citizens? Okay, seeing none, we will-
Meg, actually, can I make a comment real quick?
You absolutely can.
I sent an email to Rob about an article I saw in the paper recently about the new business that just opened, Benny's Clam Shack down the road.
Yes.
Just gave them their license, and I highlighted a section of the article where he said that he's got several businesses in several communities, and that dealing with the town here in South Kingstown has been a pleasure compared to where he's been in other parts of the state. And I just wanted to give accolades to our departments for making that an easy process for him. So not every town hall makes it easy, and it's great to hear that we're doing the right thing.
And I may have been remiss myself, but I had the opportunity to speak to him, and a lot of times, sometimes we hear that either the building process or the permitting process can sometimes be difficult and long. He said that compared to a neighboring community, South Kingstown was wonderful to work with. So to our department heads and our departments who facilitate people who want to come in, whether they want to start a business, they want to pay their taxes, they have an issue with anything to do with the town clerk's office, I really, really want the community to think about that, because these people work hard, and they really do a great job. It might not always be the answer that you want to hear sometimes, because there might be more things that have to be done. It's not because they don't want to help you, it's because this is what they have to satisfy, either at the state level or the local level, but the people that work in this town are here for you. They're here for me, they're here for anybody who pays taxes, and they're for, here for anybody who wants to accomplish something. So I think not only congratulations is to be deserved even for the job that the town manager and the councilor does, it's for the people who work here hard every day for each and every one of us. So thank you for bringing that up, Liz, because you guys do a great job. You all do a fantastic job. And you, who've been here for fifty million years.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Asborn. I just have a question. There's so many rumors going around and about the school committee, the town council, the schools, what's going to happen to our schools. I just wonder, what is the procedure of the closing of Wakefield School, or if they do vote on the recommendation of Curtis Corner closing? I know there's been a lot of information out in the community, but there's many, many more people who are just finding out what's actually happening, and I just wonder what the procedure is. I know it's going to take a long time, but I'm concerned of what the town council, when they have to make a decision. I know we must probably have to wait to see what's going to happen with the school committee first, of what the decision's going to be as far as what options, what the procedure is, how much money we're going to get, but there's always that concern in the back of my mind and many other residents in the town of South Kingstown, is what is going to happen to these schools. I personally hope Wakefield School is not shut down. I've sat on the zoning board for twenty-two years, and all I remember, I retired as of last month, and all I keep thinking of since the eighties is sitting at workshops, sitting at different strategic planning, and all that I keep remembering is what makes a village. And a village is our school, our pathways to walk downtown, our businesses, and if we remove Wakefield School, I am very, very concerned for the economics of the business merchants down at Wakefield, of what's going to happen. If anyone travels outside of South Kingstown and goes through other towns and takes a good look at the historic districts, some of them are in very bad shape. They look like a town that closed up from many years ago from the wild, wild west. And once that happens, it's going to involve the neighborhoods in our area. If one place becomes depressed, it's going to spread, and many of these people who live along Kenyon Avenue, Robinson Street, and around these areas, they've purchased these homes to come to our town of South Kingstown, to have the quality of life, to be able to ride their bicycles to school, just like when I was a kid, I used to ride my bicycle to Wakefield School, have the parents, grandparents walk their children to and from school. And not only that, I go down, my last granddaughter will be graduating from Wakefield School, so I'm down across that bridge many times during the course of the season of the school year. And if one stands at that bridge and takes a good look of the traffic that goes across that bridge, the parents go to the ice cream store, they go to the pizza parlor, they go to the karate classes, they go to all that matters, they walk to pick their car up over at the Chevrolet station. The amount of people who are not going to be walking like they're walking today is going to certainly have a huge impact on our businesses. So I'm just really concerned of what's going to happen in the future of these buildings. If something happens, it's not going to bring the traffic that these two hundred and some families are bringing into the town at this point in time, and I'm just wondering what the timeframe is that the town council will be approached to make the decision of what we have to do in the town to move forward with these buildings.
May I, Meg? During our work session, we actually discussed a little bit of the timeline and the letter of intent that the school committee has to submit to RIDE for the application, and that has to be in by August first. And before that gets submitted to RIDE, it will come to the town council, and we'll authorize or not authorize the town manager to sign it. And we were just discussing that we're going, we'd like some more information before, you know, we make that authorization, and there's actually a timeline that's posted to, I think it's Board Docs, from the, what is the, RGB, the consultant group, that has a more specific timeline about each stage of the application and the process. And like you said, it's going to take a really long time, but it looks like the next big thing that's going to come up would be the letter of intent that would have to be in by August first.
So how can the town council make a decision on this? Well, we don't even know, as a community, how many dollars, if any dollars, we're even going to have to even depict of what option we can have, because from what I understand, I've gone to some of the meetings, I was away for about five weeks, couldn't go to the last few meetings, that how can you make a decision on all of this if we have no idea what type of funds we'll be receiving?
I believe also, just so you know, Option B was voted on by the school committee.
Well, I understand that.
So what Liz was talking about was the signing of the letter of intent to put the application in, which is going to get authorized or not authorized by the council.
Which we, as a council, haven't even met to really discuss.
So you've not met at all, and when will that happen?
Whenever they send it to us. So if they send it to us before the next meeting, it would be on the next meeting's agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Hi, Stacy Boccioni. Liz, can you explain a little bit more about the kind of information you're waiting to hear? Or does it depend on receiving the letter?
Before we go any further, no problem with discussing this, but we need a motion to add this to the agenda, because this is public comment and it's not on the agenda. So can we just have a motion to add it for discussion purposes?
Make a motion to add to the agenda discussion about the letter of intent for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just as a clarification, RIDE regulation calls it a letter of interest.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's fine.
So the town manager was explaining that the letter of interest that gets submitted typically is signed by representative of the community, or I'm sorry, of the municipality, which is usually the town manager, but before he could be authorized to sign that, he needs authorization from the town council. And during the work session when we were talking about it, I think Abel specifically referenced a few things that he was interested in knowing, and we just kind of all nodded and said it'd be nice to have some more information before we proceed with authorizing something like that.
So can any of you tell me what the information is, or how you intend to-
We wouldn't know because we don't have it yet.
Oh. So you want more information, but you don't know?
This committee hasn't submitted it to us.
Right. I mean, I think in particular, what I asked about in the work session was clarification on some of the issues that have been raised by constituents and about- on some of the issues that have been raised by constituents and about what goes into potentially submitting two applications, so doing it in stages. One stage potentially where you deal with safety upgrades, high school improvements, improvements to the single middle school, and then seeing what happens as the grades are reconfigured in terms of needing potentially to close Wakefield with a second application. So that's mainly what I want to hear clarified, whether two applications are allowed, how that process would look.
And whether or not two applications would be double the cost in terms of the application fee.
And the other? Minimal compared to the millions of dollars you'll be bonding, right?
The other consideration I have is exactly what you just said. Really, for something that is going to happen in stages, I can't imagine that this town would allow us to put it on the voting block in one big chunk sum. And where is, Tricia is here. I mean, that just can't happen. I mean, well, it can, but it shouldn't happen, truthfully. Things have to be done in stages. And I might be misspoken saying that, but the proposals have allocated budget funds that say this is what we're going to need. That's just not smart to put that on any.
And to clarify a little further, we've heard numbers about how much spending total, but I don't think the council has heard specifically what that spending relates to.
Yeah, and the presentation we were forwarded from RGB that was at the school committee meeting recently also was a bit vague in their numbers and assessments of what was going to be done, so.
I agree. I agree. I don't think we've, I haven't seen a breakdown either. I lost my train of thought. I had a good one. I'll come back if I remember it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you know, I know what it was.
Too late.
And in seeking those answers about spending and reimbursement, I would urge you to also check with RIDE directly because some of the information that we've heard at school committee meetings is not quite the same as what we're hearing when we contact RIDE directly. So I would just recommend that. This is a big deal, it's an awful lot of money we're talking about, and it would be in your best interest to get that information directly from RIDE and not necessarily just from the school committee or RGB, who quite frankly stands to earn quite a bit of money from this deal as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments?
I feel like, this is Sherri Thompson, I'm sorry. Sherri Thompson?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I feel like there is more opposition than the people in this town are aware of, of the closing of Wakefield Elementary School, and I submitted a letter today to the town council members. If I may read it rather quickly, I'd appreciate it. As a taxpayer, I'm writing to express my opposition of the closure of Wakefield included in the school committee's plan for school upgrades. There are many reasons why this should not happen, but I highlight the following. This was a hasty decision, non-transparent, and three of the members on the school committee were not voted in by the taxpayers of South Kingstown. This is biased. I understand there are processes, and it just so happened that three members stepped down during a time when it was not an election. However, it is very unfair for a decision of this magnitude that involves the entire community of South Kingstown to be decided upon by members that were not elected by the taxpayers of South Kingstown. It is also unfair for a decision as important as this one to be bundled and hidden within these options. This should be a transparent process and communicated better to the taxpayers. There are many taxpayers who are, are and not aware of that the closure of Wakefield Elementary School was even on the table. I strongly urge you to move very slowly and also consider looking at what is happening in Newport County right now. They are outgrowing their new school due to population increases which cannot be forecasted. Decisions should not always be based upon state funding. We must look at our town as a whole and what is best for us as a community, education and our children's future in South Kingstown. Let's be realistic. The numbers can be twisted any way to show favor in any direction, but what does the majority of the taxpayers want here and not just the ones who were elected, who were not elected, making decisions which please only the few at the top? This closure is not supported by the majority of this town if you look into it further. Best regards, Sherri Thompson.
I agree.
Just so we're clear, we've actually appointed four of those members since the election.
Yeah. Four resigned, so I know you had said three had been appointed, but it actually was four. But it's...
Point taken, though.
No, it's a moot point, but your comments are well taken, and I appreciate the fact that you came up and read that tonight very much, so.
Don't be sorry.
Oh, don't even worry about it, we're normal. Anybody else would like to come up to the podium?
Jason Ralph. I just wanted to make it clear that submitting the application in two phases is identical to Option A, which the school committee did not vote for. So just to get that out there, that the school committee voted to move forward with Option B, and as a town, I believe we need to begin the process of moving forward.
Thank you.
With all due respect, I disagree with Mr. Ralph's statement. It actually was not a straight B vote. The vote was Option B with a caveat to support closing, keeping Wakefield open if enrollment does go up. And there are plans in the works to try to see how that can be done. So, a two-phase application would certainly give time for that to take place. We can't expect that next year the enrollment's going to go up, especially after hearing that the school may possibly close. So we have some work to do within affordable housing, within promoting our schools, which have now adopted more of a wide, they're adopting STEAM, and they have itinerance of Spanish now, which just voted on by the school committee. So whereas it used to be DLI or no language, we now have that to promote. And we need to do a better job in the school committee and the citizens of promoting the amazing things that go on in our schools. So I think that takes time. And the enrollment is not as dire as it was advertised to the public on the night of the vote, and some information has come forth after that time, which I think you've seen most of it. If you haven't, I urge you to sit down with somebody who has that information. If you need, you can reach out to me, I can get you in touch with anybody who has that information. But the information about enrollment being so dire, it was really overestimated. The community has a grassroots effort right now that is in effect saying, we do not support the closure of Wakefield Elementary School. And by signing a letter of interest, that would be endorsing the school committee to do something that is not community-supported, and it is their mission to work towards community-supported goals. In terms of RIDE's application process, they have to prove that what they're submitting is community-supported. The part of the plan that closes Wakefield has been communicated to you as not a supported plan, so it would be respectful of the community for you to speak to the school committee and let them know that you are not in favor of signing a letter of interest that is not fully community-supported. There are so many parts, and that will take a long time, as Meg Healy did mention, it will be a long process. Why not start with the things that are supported by the community? There are plenty of parts of the plans that have not had opposition that we can move forward with and can be voted on, and we don't want to hold up the process of upgrades to schools because we think it's really important. But there's just the one issue that we're still struggling with. Why not give time to Wakefield Elementary School and the community to help boost the enrollment? Time is needed to do that, and I think our town is certainly desirable enough for that to be a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That rang a bell with me. Rob, part of that memo, if possible, I'd like to have address the viability of the trigger language that's been floated around the letter of interest or the application. I know that there's some talk of triggers, and I've also heard that RIDE doesn't like triggers, so I'd like to see an answer to that.
Heard that as well, I'd like to know.
So the idea here being that...
The closure of Wakefield School would only happen if...
Would be triggered by some number in the future, some contingency that has not yet been identified.
Yeah, exactly. And I mean, I like the point of, too, going right to RIDE for some of these questions because it seems a little ambiguous, you know, the way we're reading things and understanding them, or if they have maybe guidelines more in their application.
So again, I'm perfectly happy to put together a memo. I will point out there are some limitations on my communication with RIDE. I mean, the superintendent in the school committee is the educational authority for the town of South Kingstown. I can do research, Mike and I can certainly put together a memo that addresses these issues, but our ability to, you know, put ourselves in someone else's shoes is limited.
And then, you know what, I respect the fact that our town charter has limitations in terms of what the capacity of the school committee is, and I certainly do not want to step on their toes because they're tasked to do the job they do. But I do think they are accountable to the town council from the standpoint that we will be making the decisions in terms of funding and balloting. And for us to justly be able to do that, we need some answers to some questions. So I don't necessarily think you have to go to RIDE directly, but I do think we can do that on our own, on an individual basis. But I do think that the questions that we do have that have not been answered, it's not fair to ask us to make a decision without the accountability from the school committee to answer those questions.
And Meg, I want to make it clear that, because it seems like some people are saying that we can't trust the school committee.
What? Wasn't my implication.
But that's what it sounded like, so.
I wasn't implying that at all, I just, it seems like there's lots of...
I'm not implying that at all.
No.
But I just to make an educated decision based on every taxpayer or voter in this town to go to ballot and make a vote on some decisions that have been made, I think it would be prudent of us as representing our constituents to have as many facts as we can from the school committee. And that, to me, is transparent, and that, to me, is accountability. And I think that is not something that we should be ashamed to ask for.
And just to clarify, I mean, it seems like everybody's interpreting what RIDE wants differently. I think it just makes sense to ask RIDE directly, what are you asking, or is this applicable, or is this appropriate? You know, go to the source. That was my intent with that statement.
But I think the school committee, too, is tasked with a hard decision. It's been extremely hard for them, and there's been a lot of wrath. It's not been easy for anybody. We've all sat here at the table, and how many emails have we all gotten? Numerous. They've probably gotten twice what we've gotten. And in order for us to make the best educated decision, I know the decision by a vote has been made by the school committee, but the repercussions of that decision, we have the right to ask.
We will make sure you have a detailed and informative memorandum that lays out all of the issues that you've discussed here tonight and explores the implications of related topics.
Thank you. And Tara, before you speak, I just want to let you know I did reference your email and made sure that we included it in our email report.
It's added, yes.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure you got it.
Yes.
Tara Apperson, I just, you know, on this same note, want to request that you do as much of this information gathering in public as possible. So I know that the school committee has talked about having RIDE come to one of their meetings, and I would love it if you guys could have another joint meeting with RIDE so that these questions are being asked in a public forum and we're not hearing, well, I heard this from RIDE and I heard this from RIDE. And I mean, I feel like that's kind of what we're hearing right now, like everybody's gotten these pieces of information from different places, and it gets confusing and it lacks transparency. So it would be wonderful if we could have some open meetings, joint meetings, because I think we need to be transparent. And also, you know, I think, and I said this in my letter, that you all do have a responsibility to make sure that the plan that goes forward is a plan that has public support. And so, you know, I urge you to continue to reach out and see what the level of support is. I don't think there's enough public support to go forward with Plan B with triggers. I would like to see Plan B in two phases. I'd love to see Plan A, but maybe too late for that, so anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Tara. And please come up to the podium.
Hi, April Tessier. The Mattoonik School had Seth Magaziner come to the school and speak to the bonding process. He would be a very good person to discuss since it's going to start at the state and then would go down to you. So just throwing it out there for a place to gather information. There are a lot of voices opposing, but there are actually a lot of voices who are comfortable with Option B. So I think you get a lot of people emailing about the opposing and not as much of the, we're okay with it, we think this is great for our district. So please gather all your information and hear all the sides, and I'm sure you will be inundated with more emails after tonight. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Come on up.
Just wanted to get off the subject of Wakefield School for a minute and talk about South Kingstown High School, the librarian there. She's been there for 18 years. I heard it's going to computers and you're going to move her out of there to Mattoonik School maybe, or another school. She has two years to go to retire, and...
I don't know, that would be school committee, we don't...
Well, she's still employed by the town, I think, isn't she?
Yeah, but we don't get in...
Well, I'm just bringing it to your attention, okay?
You know who that, well, you don't even have to say it.
She's a town, she works for the high school. She's been a librarian there for 18 years, and she has two years to go, and you're going to turn it to computers and not have a librarian in the high school anymore? And send her to Mattoonik Elementary or another elementary school? And she has two years to go. I'm just going to bring it to your attention.
No, thank you, that would be something...
You can look that up, okay?
Yeah, but we wouldn't be able to do a thing about it.
Well, just to put it in the back of your head, maybe?
No, but thank you. We could defer that back to the administration. Anything else? Seeing none, we will move on to the town manager's report.
That's great. So we're going to turn to our flag report, and I'll point out that the green in the clerk's office is actually in large part due to that very good press coverage and good news story on the openings of Benny's Clam Shack. I'd also like to just comment briefly before getting deeper into this report on the very kind words that were just said about me, but I will point out, I may be a stand-up guy, but I am standing in a steady ship because Steve Alfred set it up. I've got to tell you, it's just wonderful to be coming into an organization that had a leader who cared about the community and who was as competent and as skilled as Steve was. I count myself very lucky. This report this week is a different set of red and yellow and green boxes. The key highlights in this report really, I think, are the EMS staffing continues to be a challenge for us. We are still looking at five vacancies, and that means we're under staff. We have overtime expenses involved with that. That is an issue that is going to be an ongoing issue for us. I will say that we have come to a tentative agreement with the union, and that may resolve some of our ability to do recruitment. Hopefully, that'll be coming to the council soon for ratification. The budget item in admin services is related to negotiations. We have budgeted for 2% increases with the unions that we're negotiating with now. 2% is not what we're seeing around the state, and it does cause us to be in a difficult position with regard to the budget. Public Works has got good news. Public Works has been on the record as saying they're always going to be red in customer service. They are yellow this week in large part because they had a very good interaction with a citizen who was concerned about the potholes up on Waits Corner Road, and just so happens that we've got a scheduled resurfacing going out there, and we were Johnny-on-the-spot with the right answer for the citizen who called with those concerns. Other than that, there's nothing really... Other than that, there's nothing really earth-shaking to worry about on this report. We've had a relatively quiet week.
Rob, just a quick note about Public Works, and you mentioned potholes. I sent you an email a few weeks ago about somebody's complaint about potholes, and they referenced a pothole patrol. And no sooner had I sent the email out, that I think it was 12 hours later it was fixed. So it was another happy customer, as far as the potholes are concerned.
It's, it's a balancing act for them, they've been doing very well this spring. It's been a very hard, it was a hard winter, it was a tough spring for potholes. There's lots of complaints, but you're right, I'm also hearing lots, lots of compliments with regard to the responsiveness, so-
You're so lucky you found the street before it was redone. Let me tell you, every, every spring, it's like teeth chattering.
I will tell you, Route 1 is coming along very nicely. I, I did get a few phone calls, because they put up, is John Shock, is he here? Live wires overhead coming from the Green Hill area, coming out of there. But basically, that was probably due to the fact that the construction was going on, but everybody's been very prompt in answering questions, and they've done a great job. You're right.
And speaking of Route 1, planning's green is due to the fact that the state scenic roadway, is it commission? Board. The scenic roadway board met on Wednesday of last week and approved the council's request for Route 1 to be designated as a scenic roadway, so-
Good, good.
That's, that's a success, and that makes us green for planning, both in the customer satisfaction and the intergovernmental affairs box.
And that was like 14 years in the works, right?
Actually, it was longer than that. It was nearly 21, I think. It was a long, long time in the works. One note about the report, starting next week, community perception will be relabeled as news, and we're gonna be looking forward, and not just in the, over the last two weeks, not just in our rearview mirror, but also looking forward to sort of news items as they come up. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Now, we move on to the council's-
I'm just wanting to report out that we're getting very close on that purchase and sales agreement, the Old Mary Carpenter Farm Road. I, I sent their attorney my revisions, he accepted them all. He wanted one additional exhibit that I had referenced, I sent that to him. So I have a feeling very soon we'll have a signed agreement.
Moving along, it really is moving along.
Now, do we have any appointments tonight that I know of? No, I don't think so. Moving on to 14A, which is a resolution authorizing an amendment to a ward of bid, which was originally granted on June 13th of 2016 to Nari Gansett Dock Works for the project on Mattoonik Beach Road for protection improvement in an amount not to exceed $1,198,800 to an amount not to exceed $1,248,800, including its contingency. And this is subject to approval from the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, and this has been described in a memo dated May 1st of this year entitled "Mattoonik Beach Road Protection Improvement Project Award Amendment". Any comments, any questions?
Good evening, so we're at the, on the night of the, we're at the end of the project. And all we have left, the remains, is replacement of a water main next to the road, next to the seawall, and repaving the road. We're about $900 short, and with the council authorized, we're asking consideration to amend that award to cover the, the remaining work.
Motion to approve item 14D is presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none? Motion carries. A resolution moving on to F is authorizing an amendment to a ward of bid granted on June 26th of 2017 to T. Mayozy in North Kingston for an amount not to exceed $899,500 to an amount not to exceed $1,670,550 for the fiscal year of 2018 and 2019. This is pavement reclamation and overlay, and this is further described in a memo, a memorandum from John on May 4th, again, recommended as pavement reclamation and overlay program contract extension.
So Mayozy Construction Paving has done paving for us for a number of roads in the past. We had very favorable pricing from them last year, and they've agreed to hold their pricing for the current fiscal year, which includes Jerry Brown Farm Road, Waits Corner Road from Fairgrounds Road to Route 2, the western half of Wardens Pond Road from Leesha Drive to the Charleston Town Line, and a very small portion of San Turn Road that's failed.
I think locking in those good prices with the way oil prices are going is a great idea.
There, there is an escalator in the contract for oil, but we're trying to get in and get the work scheduled as quick as we can.
Motion to approve item 14F is presented.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Seeing nays, motion carries.
Let's move on to G, which is a resolution authorizing a ward of bid to Stillman Uniforms here in Westerly, Rhode Island, for the purchase of Soft Body Armor. Per unit pricing has been submitted on May 1st of this year to be held through June 30th of 2019 with the option to extend one additional year through June 30th of 2020, inclusive if this is mutually agreeable to both parties and as further described in a memorandum from our police chief entitled, actually, May 1st this came in, "Bid Recommendation Soft Body Armor".
Make a motion to approve item 14G is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. H is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Minnesota Life located in St. Paul, Minnesota, for three-year term life and accidental death and dismembership. Contract for a period through July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2021 in accordance with the rates that are listed here in our town council agenda, and this is described in a memorandum from the procurement administrator to the town manager on May 7th. This is titled "Award of Bid Term Life Insurance Contract".
Motion to approve agenda item 14H.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any abstentions, nays? Seeing none, motion carries. Moving on to J, which is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Pivotal Concrete, 11 Kenyon Woods Way, to construct a bowl at Old Mountain Field Skate Park in accordance with the bid specifications that have been presented in the amount not to exceed $36,600, including, including a contingency of $850. And this has been described in a memorandum on May 8th from Terry Murphy entitled "Bid Recommendation Skate Park Bowl Construction".
As it's indicated in my memo, this is really a planned capital improvement, which is being funded not only by capital dollars, but also through fundraising from the very active skate park committee. There's really only one, one bidder here to be considered, that's Pivotal Concrete, and he's, he's been heavily involved with the skate park development over the years.
Terry, I noticed the, the two bids that were submitted were very, very far apart. Any indication why?
My, my inclination is that the higher bidder did not understand the scope of the project and chose not to rebid, because both were technically over budget. We went back to both bidders and asked for their lowest bid, and neither moved. I think one, the higher bidder just decided not to look at the scope again.
Motion to approve 14J.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
I'd just like to say congratulations to all the people who worked so hard to fundraise for that. I think it's been a big effort.
Not only that, everybody enjoys going to Old Mountain Field. For whatever reason, there's so much going on there, it's just a great spot. Thank you, Terry. Okay, at this point, with no other items to discuss, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I said it.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, and the time is 8:51. John Shock, I wanna talk to you before you go.